Alright, everybody ready? Call the meeting to order Thursday, September 25th. City Council meeting for the city of Tallulah. First item is Pledge of Allegiance and Prayer. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in prayer. Father God, we come to you today thankful once again to be able to come to you in prayer. Father, I ask that you watch over everyone in this room and that the Holy Spirit put a hedge of protection around not only them but their families as well. I ask you to give all of us a measure of wisdom tonight as we go through our meeting. These things we pray in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Okay, is there a one call please?
Wells?
Here.
Day?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Good evening, everybody. Under public comments on the agenda with the councils, okay, I'd like to move number nine and number 10 up so that we can get those items in here before we go into some of the other items and have more discussion. That's alright with you all? Are there any other public comments on the agenda? Okay, so we're gonna go with number nine first. Approve the occupational license of Covington Casket Company. You're already going to present it? Hello, how are you?
Thank y'all so much for allowing us to come and speak tonight and meet with you. Covington Casket Company is a casket manufacturer based in Ingleish, Alabama. We're 100% American-made. We've been in business for 101 years. We've been looking at expanding our territory and we found the wonderful town of Tallulah. And we have set up a warehouse over on Skyder Depot that we have been able to take advantage of. And we've redone the roof. We've done a lot of work on the building to kind of bring it back up to where it really needs to be. And then we plan to operate our warehouse out of there. We signed a five-year lease, but we hope that turns into 50 because when you've been around 100, you don't play short-term. Do y'all have any questions or anything?
Have you spoken with the folks down in Concordia about sales tax and all of that?
Yes ma'am, we've taken care of all of that. We've also had our building inspection and our code inspection. There were a couple of things on the building inspection that they asked us to take care of. We're in the process of dealing with that now. We're working with the power company as well as our landlord to kind of get some things taken care of with the electrical. But everything else we've gotten taken care of. As soon as that is completed, we're supposed to take care of the... Well, we've applied for the sales tax already.
Council, do I say any questions? Now, we have a... Someone make a motion to approve the occupational license for Covington Casket Company?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Harris, second by Ms. Houston. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We look forward to you guys being here. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Don't forget to like and subscribe.
Uh, the old friends building on Depot Street?
Yes ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number 10. Approve occupational license Clean for Healthy Living Incorporated.
You said it's the old friends building on Depot Street?
Yeah.
So did they get the approval?
He said he was working with Randall for the sale.
No, uh, we got a... Someone wanted to do a biz on their own property. And we told them that they had to get the approval from the downtown historicity or something.
No, what we told them was the size of the building where they wanted to put that particular location did not fit with the scale and the size of the other buildings according to the ordinance that we have.
Okay, so this new company will make the adjustments to their...
They're working out.
They're working out of the building that's already there.
So they're gonna be all the codes that you all... Or ordinance that you all said that the other company was like, gonna be... They're gonna be the media?
So the other company was bringing in a manufactured building. We're talking about a building that's already there.
I understand. I just want everybody playing by the same rules or something.
Okay, uh, Clean for Healthy Living Incorporated.
Good afternoon. I'm Gloria Henderson. Clean for Healthy Living is a nonprofit that is, um... Its purpose is to improve community health by providing needy families with personal hygiene items and household cleaning supplies. And like I said, we will be educating, uh, educational classes that the older 10, we're aiming to serve at least 100 underprivileged families by providing them with sanitary supplies, household cleaning items, and also providing them with those workshops so they can use the information that we give them to go back and, you know, make more sanitary surroundings. And that's how, where we live at. In the 700 North Seer, in the same building with Tallulah Pool Distribution. We have a site in there.
Council, anybody have any question? If not, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the occupational license for Clean for Healthy Living Incorporated.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Wells, second by Ms. Day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, so next on the agenda, we're gonna move back up to number five. Presentation by E&amp;P Consulting Services. This company, uh... I found them, they work with adjudicated properties. Um, this is just the presentation tonight. We're not gonna be making any, uh, decisions ongoing with them or not. They have sent, um, in senior packets, a copy of a proposed ordinance and some other paperwork. Obviously, the attorney will... Some paperwork that the attorney will have to look at. Again, tonight is just a presentation. As you guys know, we have, I don't know, 40 to 50 adjudicated properties around town. So if we can sell those properties, bring some money into the city, maybe help somebody do something with the property, rent, whatever the case may be, um, I think it's definitely something we wanna look into. So Wesley. Wesley Johnson is here and she's going to pass some information to the council.
Absolutely. Kimberly, anyone else here with you as well?
Kimberly as well, yes. We took a board to them. Normally, there's an aisle there, but...
Thanks for inviting me here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity. Um, so does anybody have any questions? Do you want me to kind of give a little brief overview of what we're talking about?
If you could, just so the audience is aware of it.
So adjudicated property is property that somebody did not pay their taxes. Taxes are due at the end of the year. And as we all know, you know, the... They're going to tax sale is the word we use. Technically, that has changed over the years and it will continue to change. Starting in 2000, uh, I mean, starting in 2027, it's going to clearly be a tax lien and things will slightly change. Um, but regardless, right now and through 2026, if someone does not pay their tax bill, then it's not just a lien. It's actually going, you know, it's a senior lien that goes to sale and it will be adjudicated and in the hands of the political subdivision. And then so when we talk about adjudicated property, we're talking about property that somebody didn't pay their taxes on. So you didn't get the money that you needed to run your, you know, straight to do your thing, to conduct your business. And then when it went to the auction, no one bought that lien. No one bought that tax lien or that tax title. And so, um, the law has been in place for many years that someone, it's adjudicated at that point to, in your case, the city. And if, um, someone, it sits there. It doesn't go back up for tax or auction the next year. It just, once it's on the list, it's there. And so what that means is, is that you're not getting that opportunity for revenue. After three years have passed, the state law says that you can then take it if somebody has still not gone and paid their taxes, that you can take that and sell it to a third party if you'd like to. Now, it's not so much as I say, "Oh, you wanna buy it? Great, buy it." There's a whole set of procedures that go into place if you're going to sell to someone else. And one of the things that you do is, um, you have to conduct research on the title to see all of the individuals that may be holding a lien on it, mortgage, different owners through the years. Sometimes, sometimes a property has been through multiple tax sales. And so we send, there's a statutory requirement that you send a certain notice and give a certain amount of time before a sale would then go through or an auction would happen and then the sale after the auction. And so our job and what we've been doing since about 2013 is handling that process. So if somebody's interested in a property, they point it out, they pay our fee because there's a lot of work involved. Uh, we don't get any, any money for the sale of the... We don't get any money from the value of the property. That's not what we're, our money is made off of.
How much is your fee?
Our fee is $1,200. It's a lot of work. The person that's interested in buying the property, not, not you, but the person who says, "Hey, I wanna buy this property", they start the process with us by paying $1,000 to us. Certified check or money order. At that point, we know they're serious. They're like, "Okay, they've gone to do this, you know, given us this." We then go and conduct the research to find out, is it still adjudicated? Because until it's actually sold, anybody can come redeem the property, which means pay the taxes and stop that from happening, from it being sold. So we find out, is it still adjudicated? We get the values of the taxes and all of the statutory impositions that are owed from the tax collector. We also go to the tax assessor. We look and see what the valuation is based on the assessor's last valuation. And the minimum bid, according to state law, you can have it this way. There's a variety of ways. You can say no minimum bid. You can do a variety of things. But it also suggested the statute that you start at two-thirds of the value based on the assessor's valuation or the back tax bill, whichever is lower, if you start that minimum bid. So we then send to the person who's interested an offer to, on your behalf, that says, "Hey, you wanna start the bid at whatever the lower of those two figures are?" And then they either reject that if it's too high. They just say, "No, I don't want to. I changed my mind for any reason." If that, if they reject it, then they get their $1,000 back. So at that point, it was just good faith. Otherwise, we would be entertaining people. Like, "Well, find out this, find out that." We'd be bugging the tax collector, you know. So that's, at that point, um, it was good faith money, saying they're serious. If they sign, they like that figure, unwilling to make that minimum bid, then they sign and make that offer. We then start prepping that property for the actual sale. So that's not the sale. We do the... That's when we start doing the real work to earn that money that we receive from them. We do title research to find out who needs to get these notices. We send the notices, we log the notices. We accept phone calls from people who are calling because we send... I mean, we cast a wide net. We, basically, in our company, we do what the statute requires and more. So if I can find heirs in the, in the conveyance records, anybody that might, you know, have a connection, even though the law doesn't say I have to track down the heirs or anything. It could still be a state of someone who hasn't, who passed away, but nobody's done the secession. But oftentimes, if I can see and figure that out, I'll send to those addresses. So we cast that wide net. After six months or 60 days, depending on how long the property has been adjudicated, then the auction is scheduled. And we'll have a, and we have to publish in the paper in your official publication, specific thing. It's a specific statutory notification. Uh, that's really Kimberly's area of expertise and I don't know what we'd do without her because she times it and does it. We usually have the auction around, it kind of wedged there up at the end of that wait time. Because people get confused after the auction. They think they won the property. Anybody who wants to come and bid against the property, bid, has to also pay our fee so that that first person who paid and got it started isn't sitting there bidding against someone who hasn't even put any skin in the earth. But only one person pays our fee. That's the person who wins. At the end of the auction, because then, one of the notices that we'll have to publish according to state statute is a notification of the auction. There's going to be an auction. This is when it's gonna be. It's a physical in-person auction and I think that's really important. I think, I love online for communication and things of that nature, but some of this stuff needs to stay right here local. Um, you know, you can have a proxy. Somebody can come in physically and be a proxy for someone, fine, but you conduct the auction here. If no one else registers to bid, then the person's written bid is the offer. You know, that's the offer. There's nobody registered else. Um, other than that registration, it would be a public auction. Anybody can come watch and see what's going on. After the auction, we then schedule the closing, which just involves preparing a deed, um, doing some, uh... We prepare a mortgage record affidavit that's filed in the mortgage records telling all the work that was done to send the notices, copy. That's all filed for public record. And the person, the interest, I mean, the people who ultimately could, you know, the property could be redeemed anytime until that deed is filed. So that's, but we don't race to the courthouse. I've gotten phone calls from people before that said, "That was my Aunt Ethel's house. We're trying to gather the money to redeem it. Please don't do this." Can you, and I'm like, "How much time do you need extra?" Beside, you know, with the law says we can sell after 60 days or six months. But if they, you know, if they're coming up on the end there, then I'll say, "Okay, two more weeks? Great." And then we'll wait, we'll make, you know, we'll put that in. What that does is twofold. It's being a good, just being a good person, right? And you wanna, you don't wanna, you want your constituents to get, you know, to redeem the property for Aunt Ethel, et cetera. But it also says, and I get about 50/50. Some people say that. I write it down in the notes. We have it all logged. And then nobody else shows up to redeem it. And that's notice because the issue is notice and you had an opportunity to fix it. And so it's like notice and you got extra time and you still didn't do it. And so it's, it's twofold. But I've also had people gather the money and, and, you know, redeem Aunt Ethel's house. And so it's, I can't guess which way it's gonna be. I think the point of explaining that is that we are boots on the ground for you guys. We understand that people are living in this community and it's the same typical scenario that we see everywhere. And we work for, we work for Washtata and Lincoln. We also are in Plaquemine. So, you know, it's just across the state, it's very similar issues that we see. Because of that, we also do run an airship program with the United Way in Monroe. And if y'all have a similar organization or they may send all the way over here. But regardless, it's really important to me to get this message out to people so that they can stop having this problem happen. I mean, how do you, I get on my soapbox, but how do you lose a piece of property? It's not a flint-flop at the beach. I can just, you know, so we, but, but we can't have those properties sitting on your books, you know, without those taxes being paid because there's so many problems. And those are the inevitably turn into your derelict properties, your abandoned properties. Any questions?
Yeah, let me ask you a couple of questions. So the $1,200, is that all that you guys get? Or are there any other fees that you guys get as well?
So we charge $1,000 at the front from the person buying it.
Okay.
We charge the other 200 at the end.
Okay.
It's just, we, we, after 10 years, we finally went up and on our prices. And I was like, "That's an easier way to handle it." If it's redeemed, um, then our, we give full money back. But, you know, if it is redeemed, if our notices get to the right people and they come and redeem it, we actually will file an affidavit with your tax collector for, and we recoup $500 of the work that we're doing is recouped. We get the person back all of their money. We just earned 500 for the notice piece of that, if that makes sense. And that's collected from the tax debtor who goes and redeems their property. I don't send that affidavit either until I'm actually at the part where I'm sending the notices. I've done the work and I'm sending the notices. So that makes sense. I don't collect it. If somebody hears about this program and then people are like running to redeem their property, my fee's not on there. That's a great thing that actually does happen in a community that has a program like this because people know they're serious. I don't want my property to be affected by this. So that could be an inevitable thing. So I don't put my fee on that tax bill.
And then the city of Tallulah would get whatever...
Whatever the costs are. I don't take percentage out of it. I don't, that's not my money. So...
Whatever the option amount is.
Whatever the option amount is, is going to the tax collector. If you, and I also collect the fees for the filing because the courthouse charges to file in conveyance records and the mortgage records. So that's, and I explain that in our documents upfront to the person who's going to be buying it, that's interested, that they will be bringing that at the end. Um, we, we deliver that check at the end of the, after we file the deed and the mortgage record. We also deliver the check to the tax collector for the amount that was the winning bid.
Any other questions?
Yes ma'am, question. That, that, I can, I'm speaking to you, speak.
Yeah.
The, uh, next question you just gave for, is the process documented somewhere? Did you say it, so can you pick up a copy of it?
Absolutely. We also have a website that's explaining it too, but there's a... We have a physical copy of the explanation as well as the application. And I, if y'all decide to use us, you would get a button on our website that just kind of, you can click it and, and, you know, look at the properties out. But also, I've given you a physical copy of a brochure that you can print out.
Right.
And that people in the community can come and get a physical hard copy that explains the process.
Right, and we put that in. Uh, if you go to the city of Tallulah's website, scroll about halfway down the page, you'll see something that says, "Current agenda and accompanying documentation." And there, all of, everything that's in the packet.
Ma'am, my last question is, was this, uh... Do y'all still do the extended relevant search up that you said you don't track down on a relative anymore?
There, I mean, I don't, there's, the law does not require, like, if, let's just say, Mary Smith, generation one, she owned the house outright. She went, let's just say, went through a couple of tax sales and now it's showing as being in the ownership of somebody completely different. When we go and do our search, we will go all the way back up to Mary Smith. And to the, but if it's an unopened secession, then we'll, but I can find something in the documents that tells me who Mary Smith's heirs are, I, we will send to them. It will be to the estate of Mary Smith at the addresses of the different heirs. But again, you can imagine, I mean, there's a big difference between being required to do it and doing it. And so I, I mean, that, um, also, this is a non-warranty deed. I'm sorry. This is a non-warranty deed at the end of the process. Now, the law is changing in 27, I mean, I'm sorry, in 26. It will allow you to convert these adjudicated properties to liens and then allow people to go through the foreclosure. I, I would just hang on a minute because you can still do both. And some of these properties are not worth full foreclosure. And so you need to kind of, I mean, that's the kind of thing I'm working on with some of the political subdivisions that I've been working with a long time. And you can always add that to your ordinance.
Talk about your sign a little bit and then go ahead.
Do y'all, when y'all come to these communities or towns, do you pick the properties that you wanna do?
I don't. I, I don't. I mean, I see sometimes I can, and there's a button, you get four buttons. One of them says featured property. And so if y'all have one that you want me to feature without an interested buyer, just say, "Wesley, we want you to go do all the work and we want you to start this notification process. We wanna have an auction for this property. We're gonna cross our fingers and hope we get a bidder." I'll do it, but I'm not gonna, if you have one specifically that you wanna try that out on, but you can imagine, I'm trying to keep my costs very low so that we, you know, and so I'm, I wait until I have somebody that says, "I, I promise I'm gonna buy it for that," until, you know, until we have. But, but there is a featured property button on the website. We can take a picture and we can... And then I think the sign also is very relevant. We, we went, Minden actually had this idea and I thought it was great. Every time we start working with the community, we learn some amazing, great idea. We have these signs that we, we can give to code enforcement. And I'm, I'm kind of stingy with them because they cost, you know, about $10 or $15 each. And Minden said, "Can you just send us the artwork and let us proof the signs and we'll have our code enforcement go out and put them in the places where we want?" And I was like, "Absolutely." So I've already sent you our artwork. Y'all can use that artwork and you can, you can promote this so that you can get... A lot of times too, if you put a sign there, oh, you know, they run down and... I haven't really done anything with it. My charges wouldn't be on that. Isn't it?
I think it would wake up people.
I, I, it, it's amazing how much it, it's amazing how much it does wake up people. And honestly, if, if all that, if that's all it does, if we never act, if you get a button on our website and I don't actually sell one property, but you've got people lined up to pay their taxes, that's, that's a great residual as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, with the non-warranty deed, is there kind of stipulation as to what you can put on that property? Trailer or build or whatever?
So we've gotten that question over the years a lot. That's, that still is just based on whatever your lo, your town, you know, yeah, yeah. Your city requirements. So we've had people buy them before and they're looking for like multiple lots together because in the city of such-and-such, you have to have so much land. We do not advise people, you know, I'm not their attorney. I'm like, "You need to go and make sure that you're buying this for what you want." But yes, a, a non-warranty deed allows you to, uh, do whatever y'all, y'all would allow them to do on the property. Raise bees, plant flowers, park a car, you know, live in the building if they're... A lot of times, there aren't viable buildings on these properties. They are not gonna be able to use it, um, for a bank loan, as collateral for a bank loan unless they do more, that, that, which is curative. We, we actually do curative work, but it's completely separate from this.
Okay, like, the person buys the property, they don't have to do their own, get their own appraisal and land survey?
If after or before they purchase it, if that's something that they really wanna do, then they certainly can. It is not a required element of the purchase process. So if we, most of the time, people don't get appraisals or surveys. Um, it's expensive. And I tell people, I'm like, "You need to be careful." Like, that, you know, I have people coming in saying, "I'd like a three-bedroom, two-math." And I'm like, "Well, me too." But that's not what this property is. This property is very distressed. It's oftentimes abandoned. It's blighted. Um, there is a lock next door program that's part of the statute and the ordinance that allows anyone who is living next to one of these properties who can attest to the fact that they have maintained it for at least a year to buy it for the minimum bid rather than have to bid against somebody else. And we have the affidavit form and if you want the photos and all of this, you know, evidentiary proof, then you make that decision. Um, we also have ordinances that we can prepare. The statute allows, but does not require you to come in and buy ordinance, say, "We're gonna sell this." Like, once somebody identifies a property, say, "Okay, we approve this property." And that's just another way of telling the whole town, like, "Hey, this one's on the chopping. Y'all gotta go, you know..."
Never have appeared.
That's right. Um, isn't it?
I was reading where you said that some of the incidents in donating the property, adjudicated property to like another agency. Do you know what that process, how it, how does that work? Like, the police jury wants to buy, wants to get the property beside the library or the library. So how did that work?
If, if that's the case, I think that's a great one to start with if we did this because I like to start slow, go through the process and that would be a good one to introduce the collector and the assessor and everybody to your program. But it looks exactly the same. The people, I think, get the same notices. It's the same cost. The only difference on my end is that I don't make them pay in advance. I'm assuming that the police jury would pay me at the end and that they're good for that. So I'm, you know, oftentimes too, with these donations, I'm very careful to let you know, "I don't make your decisions for you." But I am, like, you need to make sure it's a constitutional donation. Keep it, it's housing authorities. I've done for school boards, fire districts, um, police juries. But be careful about the, all the 501(c)(3)'s. That, this is a very inexpensive program. One thing that I do allow 501(c)(3) companies to do for me is I, if you are coming from a nonprofit and you wanna buy one of these and, um, and you're not getting it donated because y'all are... Then I allow you to pay as you go and they, because some, we have, the wait times are six months and 60 days so they can pay, create their own little payment program so that they can pay as they go in preparation for the knowledge that at the end, this would happen. So that's something that we do for them.
So as I said, Wesley, did send us some information. Obviously, the attorney has to look at it. You guys, um, will be able to look at it as well. Tonight was just a presentation. I'm not making a decision on, you know, what we're going to be doing. Um, so once our attorney looks at everything and if the council wants to go ahead with your, your company, we'll get back, you know, back in touch with you, um, have you come back and, you know, finish whatever steps it did.
That sounds great. If y'all wanna, if, if, call our number if you have more questions, you're welcome. Sorry.
I have a question.
Oh, I didn't say, I'm sorry.
You, you know, something, you mentioned something about curating services. Do you guys provide the curating services? Who some of us provide those services?
Well, first of all, there's not, as part of what I just described to you, as part of that ordinance, there is no cure, curing of anything. At the end, you have a non-warranty deed and, you know, time, time actually fixes that. I mean, I won't go into all the, I mean, I'm happy to have a, you know, it's just, there's a lot of legalities into it. and, you know, time, time actually fixes that. I mean, I won't go into all the, I mean, I'm happy to have a, you know, it's just, there's a lot of legalities into it, but, um, if that person who bought it says, well, I want to build a house on it, and I need a bank loan, number one, you know, we'll have enough conversation to hopefully catch that, and I have a form that they kind, you kind of have to sign acknowledging what a non-warranty deed is, and, you know, and, but, um, I have a whole nother, I don't sell title insurance, I fix the problems for title companies, because we've learned what those problems are. So, that's a set, a whole separate thing that people can, it's optional, they can, you know, they don't have to use that, if they don't want to.
No, when it comes to the title, you mentioned about the title, so, so, who are we searching for titles for?
We do.
Who are we searching?
Internal, for the purpose of identifying who needs to receive notice, who has an interest in this property pursuant to the statutorily required people, you know, mortgages, lease, who's going to lose an interest in this property. That's why I was talking about the heirs aren't on that list, but if I can find them, I will send that to them, and that oftentimes, you know, is very helpful. I want to point out one thing before I go, I just think it's important to, for full transparency. The official publication Kimberly sends, she's coordinates, et cetera, but the bill does come to y'all. That is the one thing that it will cost you out of pocket.
Besides that, Ash, I know.
Yeah, I, I can't control different official publication charges and what decisions I made, and I, so it, it just, it would increase that bottom line in a erratic way, so, y'all pay for that, and, um, if you have any other questions, call our office. You can tell, I love to talk about it, so.
Yeah, if anybody in the audience wants to speak with them a little bit.
What'd you say about one year, about year, about, something about one year, uh, what'd you say about one year? Something about probably about one year, uh.
Lot next door, program.
Ah, thank you, thank you. The Lot Next Door program is a program that's allowed, if you are living next to one, an adjudicated property that is eligible for sale, meaning it's been, it's been at least three or more years since it's been adjudicated, then, and you can attest to the fact that you have maintained that property for at least that year, and what that means, there's no definition of that in law. What that means is you've cleaned up the trash, and you've tried to keep the snakes and the rats and the glass bottles, you know.
So, what, if, if, can I have, see, like, if you could have given, or received it, take it to the courthouse, or like, you know, you could have bought some like that?
You don't need to take it to the courthouse, you just need to prepare it, so that we can put it together with your affidavit, along with your application to buy as a lot next door. You still have to buy it, it's not, you know, and you still have to pay our fee, but you don't have to risk someone coming in from the outside, you know, someone coming in from somewhere else and bidding against you in an auction. Sure?
All right, Wesley. Thank you very much, Kim, thank you very much, and we'll be back in touch with you all. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion of Toluwa redistricting, um, and city boundaries. Um, I think everybody has a copy, I put copies out there of an ordinance that was done back in, um, late twenty twenty-one, um, adopting a plan, uh, a reinforcement that North Delta had, uh, prepared for us. So, what I've done tonight is I've asked, um, Jeff Messenger, who we've had to work with the city a lot on redistricting, to come, give everybody an overview of kind of where we are, um, and then I've also, uh, asked Mr. Bagby, he asked if he could have a few minutes to speak on this. Um, we're not making any decisions on what we're going to do tonight, but the city does have to do something. We have, we have got to either work with Mr. Messenger, or find another company to work with, to get everything straight. Um, this ordinance that was done, um, there were some steps that should have been taken afterwards that have not been taken. Um, the attorney is aware of what's going on, I asked her, listen, you know, typically this ordinance should go over to, um, the clerk of court's office and be sent to some other people. Um, she's asking me to hold off on doing that, so just wanted to give all of you guys all of the information. Mr. Messenger, uh, has come tonight to give us just a update on where we are, um, and then, uh, Mr. Bagby. And then after that, if the council has any questions or any comments.
Yeah, I was supposed to message, sorry, I didn't even say something. Uh, he, he said the attorney told us to hold off on some things. I, I, I'm wondering, does, does, do the attorney work for us? Or, or do we work for the attorney? Because we should be directing the actions of the attorney, not the attorney saying, let's hold off on it. Because I'm letting Mr. Messenger do his presentation, but we shouldn't even have no discussion on this, I'm going to show you why not. This is over there.
All right, thank you. Uh, I have to prepare a proposal, to finalize the map.
Okay, and let me, uh, just say, um, Mr. Messenger, we definitely appreciate you doing this. However, we're not making any decisions tonight about how we're going to go forward, um, so, just so you know.
I said, just a minute, can we get a copy of that?
Hmm.
Give this.
So, it's, uh, like, Tim, I've been here, it was almost, I guess, eight months or a year ago, we thought, uh, we have a map, we've prepared a map for y'all over the last sixty years. Y'all have a map now, and the boundaries are not correct. But my proposal is this, to update the town limit map, just to show the proper boundaries of the town limits. It has, what we do has nothing to do with districting, that is not by us, we're just preparing a map of the overall town limits, not, not the voting districts or anything of that nature. Doing that, we meet with the assessor, we meet with the city attorney, I get a plate jury, and we try to take every step possible to make sure town limits are drawn correctly, research for every document, and to prepare you an updated map showing these town limits. This will not be a poll request.
So, the map that you're talking about, and the plan, or the map that North Delta did for us, are two different maps?
Yeah, that's not an official town map, no. I don't know how they came up with their lines, but that is not an official town map.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
I think that's what started this whole thing.
Hold, hold on just one second, Councilman Lewis, just one second. Go ahead, sir.
No, I believe that's what started the whole thing, showing apartments where in the city limits and the boundaries where they were. I don't know how they came up with their boundaries. So, the districts has nothing to do with what I'm talking about, I'm not talking about that at all. I'm strictly talking about the outside limits of the town, that's it.
Okay, because you've obviously seen North Delta's.
It's been a while since I've looked at it, but yes.
And I think the biggest issue is some of the things that your map doesn't show inside of the city limits, but this map does show inside of the city limits, and the council, well, the council then, you know, voted on the ordinance to have those things within, so.
And if I was to be, and I'm not here to talk to the reality of it.
Right.
We definitely meet with North Delta, make sure, you know, hey, why did you draw this, show me what you did, and we meet with all the people that applied to that, we try to add North Delta to that list, as well as, like I said, the tax assessor, plate jury, city attorney, research, need documents, and that.
So, would we be correct in thinking, and I'm no expert in this, that the census map, your map, and whatever the city has adopted in the ordinance, all of that should jive?
All of that should be the sign.
Okay, and right?
Yes.
Right now, it's not jive?
That's correct.
That is the map that the council approved via ordinance back in twenty twenty-one, okay?
Okay.
And, and, Councilman Lewis, I promise I'm going to give you, because I know this is a very important issue to you. Um, so, let, let's go ahead and let Mr. Bagby say what he wants to say, or then I'm going to let the council ask whatever questions that they would like to ask.
Okay.
Uh, excuse me, uh, for sitting down, uh, I think I was one of the initially that got this thing off the ground. And what I would like to do, uh, is both to have a copy of the ordinance, but, and, um, at one time, working with this, we received a letter from, uh, a, a attorney at that time, Dave Doherty, and I think it says, Kelly's Apartments, they might have a copy of that. And it says this, according to Messenger's survey, this area is not within the boundaries of the city of Toluwa, nor is it in Richmond. However, it is in the census map, but it's, if Toluwa's in, it's in the city. Now, what that says here is that you'll go to your ordinance, you pass an ordinance that said you were doing this map for redistricting. Mr. Messenger, his map ain't for redistricting, it's for voting. Anybody know anything? In your ordinance, the very top, y'all have it following. It said, in accordance and adopt our plan of reinforcement for the city, for, for the council and the city of Toluwa, who is based on the twenty twenty dissenting census count. Nothing to do with Mr. Messenger's map, because every ten years, by law, you have to do it according to redistricting for voting purposes, okay? This has nothing to do with annexation, it's only voting rights, he just cleared that up. You all are passing ordinance saying you, you want to follow this, so, this is, uh, whereas the United States Bureau of Census, uh, completed an official dissenting count, dissenting is the key word. Not annexation, you get an ordinance for dissenting, not annexation, which means you are bound by that ordinance, it's a legal document. It also says here, now, citizens residing in it, it says, uh, section B one, be it ordained, according to the federal and state law, the boundaries of the Toluwa City Council District are hereby redistricted, which means by federal and state law, nothing to do with Mr. Messenger. Because our map changes what? Every ten years. He don't do a, a, a map every ten years. Okay, this map designed for federal funding, housing, things we can get and move on. When you don't include everybody in it, you lose funding and you're taught, it says, based on according to federal and state boundaries of, uh, Toluwa City District, hereby redistricted, so it's for providing, provided population equality. We lost so many people, they had to go back and redo the whole map to bring us in compliance, because we've gone from a town from the city to a town, and we're going down, so they re, and they brought in this, so whatever they came up with, we should be abiding by it. The second point was, I want to look at this, the problem that I ran across is that you failed to follow protocol. The night that Mr., uh, uh, Mitchell was here, uh, we were under a rush to get this in by a certain time, and he said, Miss Yvonne said, well then, Mr. Messenger, uh, uh,
Mitchell.
Mitchell, well, go ahead and file this for us. Okay, he did, but he did it wrong. I went back Monday and talked you, so I just faxed it off, when it should have went from the clerk of records to the, uh, over to the courthouse, uploaded it to the state, to the state, and everybody could have voted down. And that's where it got lost, and, and then you said that, uh, in section four, be it ordained that the reinforcement be sent to the United States Department of Justice, they didn't get it. For their filing, report, plan to be sent to the Secretary of State, they didn't get it, and, and Department of Research, because it was not followed through according to protocol, and that was the problem, because nobody had a record. Then when you look at the map, the map says the same thing, and Mr. Doherty recognized the fact that it was on the city's census, that sells it. There's nothing else to talk, you agreed to do it according to the federal and state law, not no survey, because you, yes, sir.
See, this, this here, even the discussion is not supposed to be had.
It should have been timed.
This ordinance that Joe K. Scott, Martez Robinson, Andrew Sims, Margie Day, and Mr. Whitney signed off on.
Right.
Should be law.
That's law.
Mr. Messenger is not going to get no sixty-five hundred dollars to redo no map that's already been voted on. I told us at the last meeting, and this one we've been carefully doing, we're not filing the documentation, because we don't want to follow it. It's not a matter of opinion. Mr. Messenger is drawing the maps based on how we tend to go. That's not what's supposed to happen. It's supposed to go every ten years, it was a change according to your population. And on November the twenty-ninth, this order was introduced. On December sixteen, twenty twenty-one, a public hearing was held on it, held on it. And ten days after, it was supposed to be filed in the, uh, clerk of court's office. It will be sent, according to this thing, to the United States Department of Justice for their files. It will also be sent to the Secretary of State for the Louisiana Department of Elections and the Massachusetts Register for Votes. So, the only thing we should be doing today, not having a discussion about boundary issues, like I said, last meeting, this ordinance should be taken over to the clerk of courts.
Wow.
With the proper documentation for the boundaries for the city of Toluwa and the voting districts. That's all it's supposed to be. It's simple. So, what we're doing is, we're actually breaking federal law, and we're losing federal funding for our schools, our libraries, for our towns, and our infrastructure in this town by not doing it right. So, we're saving, we're going to do that, all kind of money, so then by not including Kelly's Apartments and the other areas in the town, we're losing population. So, by not including them, we're not losing population, you're losing federal dollars, you're losing state dollars. So, the only thing we need to do is, is file this ordinance.
But it also, Kelly's is in the, in that number, but it's not being recognized, because if you look at the numbers.
Because, because Pop was not filing the proper documentation, because we do not want to do what we're supposed to do. So, we're allowing, for our property owners to tell us that we don't want to be in the seat. No, that, no. So, what we're supposed to do now, is after the meeting, the mayor's view of day-to-day, to tell Mr. Odom on tomorrow morning, let's file the proper documentation where it needs to be. Now, one thing we've done now, we passed the deadline for the voting line change. That's what we done back in January, right? And the last day we'll have an update is in May. So, when we kick the can down the road, I'm going to get you, I'm going to turn to you. When we kick the can down the road, we continue to further voter suppression. Yeah? So, the ordinance, we understand, and this lady, you are the council, and Joe K. Scott was the council, y'all voted. Every last one, y'all voted gay for this map.
Mm-hmm.
Y'all voted gay for this, uh, ordinance. And so by not filing the ordinance according to law, means we have map fees and ordinance that get placed in the council.
Right.
It's December the ninth, December sixteen, twenty twenty-one, it's been filed three and a half years ago.
Okay, so, I think I gave everybody a copy of the ordinance, okay? There is no question that it should have been filed, and it was not. But that, this is what we're trying to rectify right there, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, hold on, hold, hold on just one second. So, I, okay, that's what this is about tonight. If it's wrong, let's get it right. Let's get all of the maps to jive the way that they're supposed to, okay? Yes, ma'am.
I, you said that attorney said not to move forward or something, why is she saying not to do that?
Uh.
You got a lot going on.
Just the board was calling, it's not a policy. I know, but I, she said she did, I was just wondering why, did she get a reading?
She said that, uh, she wanted to make sure, I think there was something in there that she thought maybe wasn't done correctly. Okay, hold on, hold on, you guys, hold on, okay, hold on, okay? I'm telling you all what the attorney told me, okay? And tomorrow, we can have another conversation with her, I understand, it should be done. There may be a reason that she is telling me not to, okay? That's all I'm saying, I'm giving you guys the truth, I'm telling you what it is. I acknowledge that the ordinance should have gone over there, okay? Okay?
Ma'am, Wes, I.
Hold on just one second, hold on just one second, okay, right? So, I'm just giving you guys the information, that's what I'm doing.
So, she, she's, um, she didn't give you an exact read, she just said she thinks something may not be right.
Right, right. I didn't have, yeah, I didn't have a, a long time to speak with her about it, right? So, she may, hold on just one second, hold on. I may talk to her tomorrow, she may say, I looked into it, go do this, we should have done this three years ago, which is probably what's going to happen, okay? So, I, I'm telling you guys, I, this is something new for me, I want to make sure that I'm doing it correctly, okay, so.
I, I guess the, the thing I questioned, it was the city attorney at the time, it happened. And so they must have gone all the way above, that they, so, uh, as far as I know about Dolly, he's very confident. So, I guess I don't, this is me speaking out, I don't know why she would say not to go on and file it, but I, I know you, I know you.
Yeah, yeah, let me remind you of something that Pop said, okay? He said the information was filed, it was just done incorrectly, okay?
So, then, it looked like she was moving forward, but this is me, I know.
I just want to make sure that I'm doing things the way that I'm supposed to do, that's all I'm, yeah, ma'am. Yes, sir.
By law, the minister cannot file paperwork on behalf of the city, he can't do it, by law.
So, maybe that was the error.
No, no, so, not that this is all that to do, okay? I make a motion that Mayor Lewis has Mr. Odom to file the, this twelve, December first, twenty twenty-two ordinance. Ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve oh one tomorrow.
Tell you that, once I speak with you.
I make a motion.
I can tell you whether you make a motion or not, I'm not going to do that.
I make a motion.
Attorney tells me to do it.
Okay, again, I make a motion that the city council enforces the ordinance that it passed in December, on December sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Orders number twenty-two dash twelve dash zero one be filed in the courthouse.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Yeah, we have a second, you have a, you have a question first?
Yeah. Isn't it the same, uh, thing that when Chicago Street and all of those streets were brought in, the property wasn't, but the people were brought into the, is this because of this one?
Uh, yes, and, and, well, after nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-six, we, the, the Chicago been in.
Yeah.
Since, and because they failed to do the same thing, it came back to bite us. And, and they had to come to and bring us in, because to, uh, Chicago Street, all that, there has been in the city limits since nineteen ninety-six. And because of these real judications and not following through, they kept moving the district lines online to fix certain candidates to get them in the office. So they locked us out, and I kept raising hell when I got on that question. With me, I kept fussing, because I knew how the thing go, and they kept, I said, you cannot do that. So we went and filed a complaint with the National Voter Registration Association about how it was done. And they went back and did the work. When Mr. Dobby came onboard, Mr. Mitchell, they said, you were right. They found a map, they go back to nineteen ninety-six, where Chicago Street follow and all that, it's in the city limits. And it was overlooked.
But what about Chester Street? Let me, let me finish this. Okay, but even now, do the people in that area pay city taxes?
They don't buy city taxes.
No, just ask them.
And that's, uh, what I'm, I'm, I'm taxing them. We old, but I'll, you get to find that out, but we are in the city, because the other day when we worked over there, the parish did not work on our road, the city had to work on our road.
I don't, I don't pay city taxes on Chicago Street, I don't.
Well, one of the reasons why you're not gonna pay city taxes, because you're not updated, right, your roads. So once you updated your roads and registered our voters' office, and in the, uh, in the state, in, in the system, then your tax rolls will begin to change. So if you don't change them according to the city lines, you got folks that should have been paying taxes, they not paying them.
That's money you lose.
So there's money we're losing.
Let me ask you.
So if your map says these places, I, I've never been up in anywhere, we will not do what's in the best interest of Toluca. So if these places, or these areas are supposed to be inside the city of Toluca limits, why are we fighting doing that? When the only they have to do is file the ordinance to correct the proper boundaries, that's all it takes.
Listen, let me ask you a question. So if this ordinance had been filed and done properly, would you redid your map, then would it have shown on your map?
No. If you give me an ordinance that says that you annexed the property, then that is what the town map will reflect. And I don't, I'm not, I'm not doing research to make sure that you abatified the law. That's not me. If you give me your map, I mean, your documents that says, we annex this, that here's our documents, you're annexing, then it's gonna be drawn on the map.
Okay, so let me make sure I'm understanding. So this ordinance says, based on what we want to do, we're going to bring Kelly's apartments and whatever into. But then, if I'm understanding you correctly, then there's the next step, annexation.
Yes, I mean, I, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't know how you can, I don't know how I can own something, and you can just put me in the city without me signing something, but that's not, for me to decide, that's not my job.
Absolutely.
My job is strictly to reflect what the ordinance says, that's it.
And, and folks, let me tell y'all, what I'm trying to do is just make sure all the maps jive in the correct manner.
And I was worried the ordinance wasn't correct when it approved it.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying.
No, I'm not saying, I'm talking to him now, okay? That's my question, so, so you have no answer for that? You don't know if the, if the, if the map was approved at the time that the ordinance was drawn up?
I believe that this ordinance is a legal document, yeah, I believe that, yeah. Yeah, I just think that somewhere along the way, we didn't do something that we were probably supposed to do, so that everything is lining up.
When I know the courthouse, they said the paper was never, the ordinance was never filed, and it shouldn't have been filed in twenty-twenty-one. If it hadn't been filed in twenty-twenty-one, we wouldn't be having this here. That's not on you, if I'm all of us, I'll put it that way.
Because Doug Mitchell cannot file official documents.
No, he cannot, no, he cannot.
Hold on, y'all, I think we've all established that an error has been made, okay? What we're trying to establish now is to make sure that we do things in a proper manner, so that everything jives, okay?
The plan, the plan is, is your ordinance.
That's what I said.
The plan is your ordinance. It says, thi- this reapportionment plan.
I, I'm not disagreeing.
So all the thing we have to do is, it says it should be sent to the United States Department of Justice for their files. The reapportionment plan should be sent to the Secretary of State, Louisiana Department of Elections, and their files. And the maps appear registered on voters, so that's all we have to update that with the map.
Yes sir.
Our job would be, you provide the ordinance. City attorney and everyone agrees, we show it on the map, we give you a legal description of the town. That's what we do. Somebody wants to come back and change it later, that's none of us. You provide the ordinance and say you took it, that's the way the town limits will be drawn. We'll write a legal description for the whole town, so you'll have it on record. And that, that's what will be our job.
So when the last time you did a legal description for the town?
Uh, I gave one to the fire chief that was based on one maybe in, maybe two thousand five or seven.
We had a date.
We had a date.
This is an.
Way back then, it's a long time.
That population, annexation is a sensible.
Right, and that's what, that's the problem.
It's two, it's two different things.
Right, so it's making chain annexation.
That's what I'm trying to do, make sure we hit to the end, that we're doing everything that we're supposed to do. That's the only reason that I asked Mr. Lester to come tonight, to give us all an update. I think we all understand what is going on. I'll be speaking with the attorney again tomorrow, she may say, you know, Yvonne, you need to go ahead and go file this or whatever. But right now, she's asking me not to, and that's what I'm doing to you.
But, but the attorney cannot tell you to not follow an ordinance. You see, that's two separate issues. The ordinance, there's a law that was passed by the council. So your attorney can't tell us to follow an ordinance.
You're not allowed.
Oh, no, she can't tell us.
Can we have some order here, please? Okay, yes, I think, would you like this?
Yes, she can.
Okay, so. For somebody else? Yes sir.
Is the plan to stop it at Star Lodge, and we gonna be included all the way up to Magnolia Street? The whole area behind A P I, will that be added to the city?
According to this.
The map, the map.
To Magnolia. Wait, just a minute, according, I'm sorry, sir, but according to the state statute, the city limits go out beyond the healthcare center.
The healthcare center.
And, 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 and when you go past there, everything between there fits. If you go out into the B C, there is a city limit sign. And that city limit sign, B C, all the way out beyond the health center should be in the city limits, according to the, the map.
No, I, I mean, I'm good with it, I just know that, I sit by Kelly's.
Yeah.
I don't double sell stores, and we currently gonna pay taxes.
Yeah, but see, but.
Parish. So if no works out, I'll be starting, I'll, I'll start paying the city taxes.
Okay, well, if you look at, if you look at the map, got a little check and marks all around it. That is the city limits, and Kelly's within that, within that boundary. The, 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 you see the little lines? Go back, that's what you tell you the city limit is. And Kelly, don't worry, it's in the city limits according to that map. See? That's what the problem is.
All right, so once we, it sounds like, once we get this, the ordinance tucked away and everything, then at some point, we're still going to need a map, maybe not from you, but from someone, showing the entire city boundary.
You're gonna need a map and an updated legal description of the whole town.
Okay, all right, so, I think we all know where we need to go now. I, like I said, I'll be talking with people, I didn't get a, a chance to speak with her in depth, but I feel like, you know, it should be done, but, yeah. I just wanna make sure, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, we all have a vote.
I just, okay, so, there is a motion on the table, it's been proper motion and second, um, for the, uh, ordinance to be filed, okay? And I'm gonna tell you all right now, y'all can vote, okay? But I'm going to have the attorney tell me yes or no, and why she's asking me to. Hold on just one second, sir, hold on just one second, okay? And I'm doing that to cover me, okay? So I'm saying it to everybody, right? Okay?
If, if.
So we have a motion and a second.
Before you start, you just gave a, a, a disclaimer almost. Now, if the motion passes, which Ms. Day and Mr. Scott voted for this ordinance, it's going to affect me. So now you cannot veto an ordinance.
I'm not trying to veto an ordinance.
Sure, all right.
Okay, so, there was a motion and a second.
To file.
To file the, uh, the ordinance.
It was passed on December sixteen, twenty-twenty-one.
Sir.
You roll call?
Roll call, please.
Will?
Yes.
Day?
No, I think we gonna wait. If you wait in this long, what are the couple of days?
If you say the Jefferson's handle will be.
Harris is next.
Yes.
Day?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Houston?
The mayor wants to do her due diligence, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna support her on that.
Are you abstaining, are you voting or abstaining?
No, I am not.
No, you're voting no?
No.
Scott?
All right, so let me let everybody know, tomorrow, tomorrow, I will have this, uh, a conversation with the attorney. Either she's gonna tell me to go over there and do it, or she's gonna tell me why I'm not going to. Absolutely, one hundred percent. Councilman Willis, I think you think that I disagree with you, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
No, 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 let me tell you. No, no, let me tell you what I'm saying, okay?
Okay.
And this is for the council members, yeah, all right? It's for the council. When, only when you cannot enforce an order that you and Mr. Scott voted on, you have to. Yes, you, yes you are, it's not enforced.
Why not wait a couple of days till she find out what?
You can't, you gotta, no, there's nothing to find out, all right? See, when you voted on an order, you voted on it.
I did.
You voted yes, for this order to go into effect. And so now you're saying, let's wait.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying no on that order, I'm saying wait until she find out what she needs to find out.
What's she trying to find out?
I don't know.
That's what my point is. So what we need to find out is, is this order, is this order is not legal, is that?
Okay, hold on, just one second, we have voted on this matter, okay? We have voted on the matter, there we are, yes ma'am.
Quick question, um, if the attorney by any chance said, don't proceed, and it's already been signed and documented and have not been filed, is that breaking laws?
She gonna have to give me a good reason, because I feel like it should have been, okay?
You got a lawsuit.
But, you know.
Yeah.
No. I think, well, I think we're all on the same page, and we all want, okay, well, would you please stop interrupting me? What is this, third grade?
No, are you, are you?
No, I'm not third, okay? So, here's what we've done, we've already voted on this matter, okay, I'll be speaking with the attorney tomorrow, we'll go forward from there.
Okay, now, can I, may I speak, ma'am?
Sure, absolutely.
Now, according to the law, was it the law, or is it the act, okay? It's not based on attorney's opinion, or how the mayor feels about doing something right. What's supposed to happen, it says the mayor, within ten days of receipt of the ordinance, must return it to the clerk with or without approval or with disapproval. And the approval is done in the form of his signature, all right? So if the ordinance is approved by the mayor, or is returned by the mayor with neither approval nor disapproval, the ordinance becomes law upon its return to the clerk. If the mayor fails or refuses to return the ordinance to the clerk within ten days of his receipt, it becomes law at midnight on the tenth day after the mayor receives the ordinance, okay? So it's not about waiting until an attorney tells us what to do. So we have basically violated state law by not following the orders that have been passed.
Yeah, I think we, we established that it was not done correctly, I don't know.
So, 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 so now, it says only the board may suspend the order, that's what y'all saying, suspend this ordinance.
Nobody says it.
That's what you're saying.
Nobody said it.
If you have not followed it, and you have not followed it, and you have not followed it, okay? It says, if you decide to suspend an ordinance, because you're saying wait to enforce what was passed in twenty-twenty-one. That means I'm suspending the ordinance.
No, that's not what that means. Okay, so, we've exhausted this subject, and I think we're done with it, and we're gonna move on now. The next item on the.
It says, I don't do that, and it says, and on, then, only by the same vote, according to the same procedure for a matter required for an act and other ordinance. So it says that in order for this ordinance not to go into effect, the council has to vote the same way they did in order for it not to go into effect.
But I think what you just said was, if it wasn't done within the ten days, then it's already law. So, if that's the case, that's the case.
Then we're supposed to file it.
Okay? Or it would go, you know, anyway, so, all right, so.
I mean, you just answered it.
I think I said that from you, thank you, Mr. Lester, we appreciate it, thank you so much. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion of the Coca-Cola building appraisal and the potential next steps to sell that building. Oh, I'm sorry, section eight, is Ms. Brown still there?
She's here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, I skipped right over you.
Well, we, um, I don't know what's the pool in minutes from last week, what month is that?
It's after this, it's after this, yes ma'am.
Good evening, honorable mayor, uh, chief police, council members, city attorney, and city but. Uh, I want to use the section eight report, which, uh, included the monthly half for September in the amount of twenty-four thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars forty-seven cents. Also, uh, it stated the, uh, caring participants of fifty-four out of our possible sixty-three, which is not changed. Uh, and to update you as far as our, our, um, process with the half, uh, set aside funds as far as us, uh, our agency continually to, um, try to submit, um, proper documentation to, uh, suffice for the insufficient funding for our agency. So I'm still working with our shortfall prevention team. Uh, also, last but not least, I would like to, uh, ask or request your approval to adopt the twenty-twenty-six fair market rents, and which I included in the package.
Any questions from the council? There's no questions, then I will, any hand motion to accept, uh, the section eight report by Ms. Brown? Okay, proper motion by Mr. Scott, and then a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Day. All in favor, say aye.
Second by Ms.
Oh, second by Ms. Harris. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you ma'am. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September eleventh, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting. Do we have any changes or corrections?
One of the things that I, I, I wanna address is the fact that I asked for the mayor's, the emerald mayor's letter that she sent to the attorney general to be included in the minutes, and it was not included. I wanted that letter be attached to become a permanent record of the minutes. So, I'm, I said the regular. Right, right, so, um, the minutes is not correct, because that letter was not placed there. Um, so I, I want that letter to be official record, because of the fact that what was sent was not accurate. And I also, um, think that that needs to be corrected before we approve anything.
So, um, a copy of the, uh, letter that I sent to the attorney general absolutely can be, uh, included in this minutes, I don't think they would need to table this.
No, that's what we said last time, and you said it be included, but it wasn't. And so I wanted it to be in the minutes when it came in our package, it was not in the minutes.
That was for an entirely different set of minutes. Um, you wanted it to go, and it's in your letter, and everything else is with it. So, well, if I'm understanding you correctly, you would like a copy of the letter that I sent to the attorney general to be a part of the September eleventh minutes.
The official record.
Okay, all right, and we can do that, we don't have to table the minutes for that, we can do that.
But see, that's what we said at the last meeting, that we were not, we were gonna put it in there, but it was not attached when we came back and approved it. So I, I want that to be in the record.
Are there any other changes to the, uh, minutes? If not, any hand motion to accept the minutes with the addition of the letter to the attorney general's office?
Motion.
A proper, a proper motion, is there a second?
Second.
I'll take a copy of the letter, like I did last time.
The motion by Ms. Houston and second by Ms. Day, all in favor, say aye.
No.
Any opposed?
Yes, opposed.
Okay. Uh, discussion of the Coca-Cola building appraisal and potential next steps to sell the Coca-Cola building. So, uh, we have Mr. Robert Wood, a local, um, individual who does appraisals, he appraised the Coca-Cola building, um, the appraisal. Um, the appraisal came back, um, at twenty-nine thousand, I don't have it right, but I think, um, right under thirty thousand dollars. And what has happened is, we have, um, a company come to us, uh, they wanna purchase the property, uh, restore it, and they understand that they're gonna have to, if they are the potential, or the eventual owners of it. They'll have to restore that building according to, um, historical, you know, to the historical, um, um, ways that they have to. Uh, what they wanna do is, uh, make the building, uh, used it for a technical company. Um, so what it does for us is, it cleans up a blight, um, it brings another company into our town. Um, we needed to get the appraisal, um, to go forward with this. What would potentially be the next steps is to work with, uh, Lamats, which is a arm of Bel-Aimé, to help us put a package out, um, so that everybody gets an opportunity to bid on it, to make sure that it's fair. Um, so, are there any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, yes, I, I have a lot of comments. Because when are we gonna ever do anything that's gonna generate revenue for the city of Tolu? E- everything this council, and this current administration in the previous term, has done has been geared toward taking from Tolu. Uh, what, what I'm saying is, as a city, we have an engineer that we paid almost a million dollars for something. He should be researching some type of funding or some type of project that we could possibly rehabilitate to plan our sales through grants and generate revenue for the town. So if we sell the Coca-Cola building, is that gonna bring revenue to Tolu?
Okay, so, can I read something to you? So I took this off of the Louisiana Office of Cultural Development, Division of Historic Preservation, uh, their website today. And it says, Grants the Reality. During the first years after the passage of the Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty-six, federal funding for rest, restoration grants was available. However, in nineteen eighty-one, Congress abandoned the grant approach in favor of an expanded federal historic preservation tax incentives program. As a result, funds directly targeted towards brick and mortar restorations of historic buildings have largely disappeared. Today, the Division of Historic Preservation has no regular, ongoing grants program to assist in restoring historic properties. So then, if you go on, and you read about the historic tax program, says it's one of the nation's most successful and cost-effective community revitalization programs. It fosters private sector rehabilitation of historic buildings and promotes investment in local economies. It also provides a strong alternative to government ownership and management of historic properties. It generates jobs both during the construction phase and of spin-off effects of increased earnings and consumption. So I think in this case, my opinion is, we're clearing a blight, we're bringing in a new business. Um, I know that there's been some mention of a museum, to, the city of Tolu is not in the museum business. Um, so, that is the information I have for you guys, and, uh, does anyone have any comments?
And what you read goes back to what I said. It's a private partnership. And so what I'm saying is, when are we gonna ever do something that's gonna benefit Tolu?
I think this is benefiting Tolu.
I always think that. You told him, you told him you had a view, but you didn't on the topic. So what I'm saying is, with a partnership, we should decide on, is it gonna help Tolu get some revenue? Now, this private business we're doing now, they're gonna make all the money. Have we looked at what type of sales tax are we gonna generate from this company? If they were to get it, or any company? Some of those are the things that we should be saying before we talk about selling it to somebody. So, so I'm going to present this because one person came to us. We had a company several years ago came, about a year ago, came wanna purchase some apartments. We've not had that discussion yet. And we got one company comes to Coca-Cola building, we talked about it five times in two months. So I still say, when are we gonna ever do something that's, 'cause we don't have any money. So, so y'all said the last time. So when are we gonna ever generate some type of revenue for Tolu? We, when I first got on the council, we wanted some, uh, uh, got a property on, wanted DNA from the city. We talked about this six times every meeting. We had never talked about bringing something here to do something for people in Tolu. Every time we look up, it's geared toward taking something away from the people of Tolu and giving it to somebody else, or just not doing anything, period. And we all okay with that.
Was there anything else?
I thought if they could sit and tell me anything.
Okay, so, uh, what we can do tonight, you guys wanna make a motion to go ahead with the sale of this property and working with Lamats to make sure that we get it out, and we have everybody, you know, have an opportunity to do it? Um, what's the ple- pleasure of the council?
So nobody has an issue with the mayor saying Tolu's not in museum business. Nobody ever issue that. Whereas Tolu, I have so much historical relevance throughout the world, that we should then use our historical significance as a revenue generating source for the city. When we have the Teddy Bear Festival, we ought to find other ways of generating money for Tolu. With the balance bill can be in, those are things we start marketing to try to generate money for Tolu. So what is the plan to get money for Tolu?
Yes, ma'am, this is it.
So there's no answer? Can you hold on a second, can somebody answer the question?
We're staying on task tonight, Councilwoman Wells. And, no, we're staying on task tonight, because you're talking about the Coca-Cola bill.
Right, so what my question is, when are we gonna ever do something to generate revenue for Tolu? As an internal matter, you should have a plan to say, this is what I have in stores to generate revenue for Tolu. Even the lady you brought earlier, she said a thousand dollars for application fee, that's ludicrous. In the police jury, you was two to K-Pop for a hundred and fifty dollars. And you brought that in front of us, oh, this is someone, I looked up.
I didn't say I looked him up, I found us, I'm sorry.
You said, you said...
Yes, ma'am, this is it.
Yes, sir, any way, any way possible, that we as a house, the city, would try to save our own Coca-Cola plant. That's just history of the city.
Thank you, girl.
That is history, and I understand we need the revenue to try to sell it, but I wish we would consider saving our own Coca-Cola plant and try and legalize it.
Well, we must have something to attract people to come to, and right now, we don't have...
We don't have anything.
We don't have anything.
And if we let the Coca-Cola plant go for, for something else, we won't have that. We haven't considered that, I mean, just suggestions.
We need to look into that more about the Coca-Cola plant, just up to the council, just starting out there. I don't, I don't think y'all realize how much it's gonna take to renovate it.
What I'm, I'm just asking, I've dealt with a few of the residences that have been restored, the historical residences, and it can be five hundred, seven hundred, if not, just with a resident, that's a commercial building. Um, I don't think y'all realize how many, that may be a big number, because you gotta keep the historical reference and accuracy there while renovating it for phones, um, uh, the internet, you've got all that, so it's very expensive. The other thing is, it would be great, I mean, I hear what y'all said about a museum, but how many people do we think are really going to come and to the museum? And then how much are we really gonna charge them to really get revenue? Because you gotta, it's upkeep on the building money. Once you do all of that, you gotta pay to keep the building going, you gotta pay for people to staff it. I don't think you're gonna get the revenue out of a museum. I think the city's gonna spend more than you're actually gonna see in revenue. That's just me, I just don't, I, from what I know, it costs to renovate no place, that's what I'm saying.
I, I, I disagree with all that. And, and what the private partnership is gonna do, the private partnership is gonna venture toward getting the same monies from the federal government to help restore that same historical building. They'll get the federal dollars, help restore it. And I think what happens whenever you have something, whether it's a historical bill or anything, the thing that drives revenue is you have to have a marketing plan. What is your marketing plan to get people to come into your establishment? McDonald's, they get to be McDonald's overnight, they had a marketing plan and a strategy to get customers in the doggone building. So what is our marketing plan to get people to come to Tolu? No, it's not the best thing that it could be, but what you do is you find out what you have that's available for people to visit, and you promote that. You don't sell everything you got to the first Johnny come lately, and that's what we always doing. Somebody come with a fly-by-night scheme, oh, that's our good, let me do that. Because we have no long-term vision. If we keep giving everything away, what are we gonna have? And as a city council pathetic that, we, well, it's gonna cost a whole lot of money, everything costs money. If you wanna have something, you gotta spend something. We gave a man a million dollars, almost, for a blueprint, we still don't have, for a water plant, and we still ain't think of the water plant. So he didn't care about money then, that was nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars in one night, and we don't have nothing to show for it, so nobody's bothered by that. So now, so the thing is, we can't be bothered by you voted to get it to him, after this, the old city don't do it. Then we come back six months later and say the town broke. Oh, man, that's be real. So we gotta have a plan and a strategy. If I'm gonna sit in that seat as an internal mayor, or as a mayor, what is my plan to drive Tolu forward? Not build up everything else? As a council, we should have a desire to see Tolu prosper. And what we do is, we vote for everybody outside of Tolu. We had a company came in, ripped us off with the doggone street projects. We voted to get hundreds of thousands...
Okay, Councilman Wells, we're gonna stay on task.
We're on task, we're talking about money, we're talking about revenue sources.
No, actually, we're talking about the Coca-Cola building.
I, I, I didn't know, I didn't know, so now, so when we talking about not having money for Tolu, we gave all kind of...
Okay, Councilman Wells, we are going to stay on this, I, no, no, just go again. We are going, we are talking about the Coca-Cola building.
Saying what you like.
Okay?
So you know what I'm saying, so can I finish talking?
No, we cannot. We're talking about the Coca-Cola building.
Okay, I'm gonna...
Council, would you all like to go forward with Lamats?
I'm willing, that's what I'm saying, you can have over top of your voice. So now, what I continue to say is this, that we have a plan for...
We have a motion on the floor to go forward with the Coca-Cola building, is there a second?
No, before you can vote on anything that has to be discussed, you can't just over...
You have, you have discussed this ad nauseam, you have, okay?
So what I'm, so what I'm saying to the council is...
We have a, uh, proper motion, and we have a second to go forward with this, to work with Lamats on it.
Again, before you can vote, Mayor Lewis, you cannot shut down the discussion because you don't wanna hear it.
Okay, it's not that I don't wanna hear it, okay? You have discussed this ad nauseam. Your discussion time is over, Gerald, Gerald.
What is your time?
Gerald, and you please do a roll call, we have a proper motion and a second.
This over, this over, this over. The full opposite as a councilperson, I was still speaking. So Mayor Lewis cannot stop me because I'm saying something that she doesn't wanna hear. So over minutes, I'm finished, so what do we wanna do?
Roll call, please.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Roll call.
So now, what I was...
I think Councilman Wells has forgotten that he cannot direct an employee to do anything.
I'm not, you're talking to me?
Roll call, please. Roll call, Gerald, please. Gerald, roll call.
I'll be quick, I'll be quick, hold on. So I still stand to say this in the, Mayor Lewis, is that we have to come with a plan to... You ain't actually there. So you have to come with a plan for Tolu, and you gonna have...
Yes, yes, Harris.
Ms. Harris, can't, you can't tell what to say.
No, she was asking if we voting on it.
So now, so, okay, we still talking?
No, we're not, you're done.
So Mayor Lewis, I still...
Ms. Harris, the vote is on you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You hear me, hold on, so now, I, I'm gonna be quick, if she's stopping, interrupting me.
That's a yes, for Ms. Harris. Gerald, that's a yes for Ms. Harris.
My only thing I want to do is us to look out for Tolu and its citizens. I'm gonna get out, I'm gonna say, I don't care what you do. So I want to look out for Tolu-handed citizens, and we've not done that.
We have four yeses, and I'm, Mr. Wells, you are no?
No.
So childish.
No, you just, right, you just, so, I know I got the...
Alright, so, we are on public comments on the agenda?
Now, before we begin, I'm gonna be very brief, Mr. uh, Mr. Williams. Now, what I want to do right now is officially, I want this to be in the record, Mr. Williams. I already gave to every council member, and to Emerald Mayor, and to the attorney. After the Emerald Mayor stated that she spoke with three council members and asked them how they feel about investigative audit, I filed an official open meetings violation on them, okay? And each council member was given a copy of the open meetings violation I sent to them. And so I want that open meetings violation that she admitted to me in the open to be part of the record. And I also sent a video, video recording of the meeting that I obtained from the Madison Journal. So this is a copy of my open meeting law complaint form that was filed against Emerald Mayor Lewis, uh, City Councilmember Joe K. Scott, City Councilmember Lisa Houston, and City Councilmember Margie Day, and participated in an open meeting violation. So I want that to be entered into the minutes for tonight's meeting. And if this does not enter into the minutes, so now we violating VOD statute, and we're gonna do...
Mr. Williams, sir.
Yes, sir. Um, Frank Williams, one of the college people. I better say that because I got a friend, focused your meet Monday evening, and said, who are you? Where you live at? I thought everybody knew it. Um, we had a lengthy discussion over there Monday evening, and I thought you were gonna be there, 'cause they had said that you would probably come on later. Uh...
Say it carefully?
No.
Before this year meet, Monday evening. Okay, I know that the average one of y'all don't care about this. Now, I ain't gonna put you in that cushion because you did all you can to help us since I had the problem. My problem, and, and I talked to you, and I talked to Mr. Donnie, and I've talked to, uh, Katrina Jackson's office, Travis Johnson's office, uh...
Would you mind if I gave everybody some of...
Julia Letlow's office.
Would you mind if I gave everybody just a scenario so that they know what you're talking about?
Keep speaking, keep speaking, it's the way.
Ms. Councilman Wells, what are you doing?
I'm stopping you from talking all the time, too.
You, you wanna tell him, I, I can tell him, because I, I told him the other day when I talked to you. I said, if you come down here, or I can come up there and pick you up, I can ride you around, and I can explain and show you everything. I even showed Josh before he left, and a young man that's in there.
Okay, alright, so, Mr., uh, Mr. Frank lives on Jones Street.
I live on Carl.
Roll call, could you please be, you know, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't, don't, don't do it like that, don't do it like that, because see, there's a serious problem.
I understand that.
But, but you are joining the meeting like that, it's not that, it's a question. See, when you get to a point where you can't even use your bathroom in your house, you gotta go to the truck stop.
Ms. Williams, you know, I came to your house about...
That's a problem.
I want you to act as if we're not, you know, we're not looking at me.
But ain't nobody talking about it. I'm, I'm, I wanted to tell you guys what, what you recommended. They recommended that I go out to Delta and look at the system that they put in out there, because it was a workable system. And they said that they are not gonna do anything, where the city, because it's the city's...
I spoke with Ms. Harris this morning.
They, they say that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they say they're not gonna do anything because it's not their problem, it's, it's the city's problem. So now, you know, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a property owner, and you need to tell me I can't get nothing done for my bathroom in my house?
They would...
It don't have nothing to do with what I got wrong in my house, it's with what's going on out there from, only blocks from the park, all the way up there.
Absolutely.
So, how do you know that?
Hold on, sir.
That's unfair for you to...
I don't think that's fair.
Yes, I understand that. They never should have been, they never should have been... That's what I'm gonna say, that's a little bit of a break, because they out there... I appreciate what you're doing today. You walking out on me?